The Florida Department of Transportation would like to welcome you to this hybrid public hearing for the US 41, State Road 45, Tamiami Trail, from Payne Street to Rio Villa, Resurfacing, Restoration and Rehabilitation, 3R and Access Management Design Project. We would also like to thank our elected officials for joining us this evening. My name is Miranda Lansdale. I'm the Public Involvement Consultant on this project, and I will be your moderator. Tonight's presentation will last approximately 25 minutes. Tonight's public hearing is presented in three formats: in person at the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center, virtually through GoToWebinar, and over the phone. There is no cost to the public to participate in this event. All attendees participating by electronic device or phone will be muted during the presentation. The audio and on-screen components of this meeting are being recorded. The recording will be available on the project website, within a week after tonight's hearing. Slide 4, COVID Precautions. This public hearing complies with Governor DeSantis's COVID-19 Safe, Smart, Step-by-Step Plan for Florida's Recovery. The physical location has been arranged to allow for social distancing and the implementation of CDC guidelines, while the virtual component provides for online engagement. If you are joining us tonight from the Charlotte Harbor Event and Conference Center, please ensure you are maintaining a distance of at least six feet between yourself and other attendees and staff. The use of masks and one-way foot traffic are strongly encouraged. Notes at hand sanitizer tables, hand sanitizer stations are available at the sign-in tables, and that sinks for washing hands are available in the hallway restrooms. Slide 5, GoToWebinar. Before we begin the project presentation, we would like to familiarize online attendees with the GoToWebinar platform. On your computer or device screen, you should see a control panel that looks like this. The default audio setting will play sound from your computer or device speakers. If you prefer to listen by phone, select Phone Call in the Audio pane of the Control Panel. Then dial in using the information displayed. All attendees will be placed in Listen Only mode throughout the presentation. Following the presentation, the formal comment period will begin. During that time, an individual's microphone will be unmuted by the moderator when he or she is called upon for comment. Slide 6, Technical Difficulties or Alternative Participation. If you experience technical difficulties with GoToWebinar or prefer an alternative method of participation, you may download the presentation slides on www.swflroads.com under Future Projects, Charlotte County, US 41, from Payne Street to Rio Villa Drive, and follow along through your phone audio by dialing 1-877-309-2071 and entering access code 218-467-887. This information has been provided in the online chat panel. GoToWebinar also offers a technical support library and live chat feature at www.support.goto.com/webinar. All materials related to this public hearing, including a recording of the public hearing, will be accessible on the project website for those who were unable to participate in tonight's live event. Slide 7, Tonight's Program. Tonight's program started with an open house, during which you were invited to view project displays. The remainder of the program will include an introduction to the project team and public hearing process, the formal project presentation, and a formal comment period. Instructions on how to participate in the public comment portion will be provided momentarily. Slide 8, Project Team. With us this evening, either remotely or at the venue, we have the following project team members: Zachary Tapp, Consultant Project Manager; Ryan Bader-Schneider, Engineer of Record; Sean Pugh, FDOT Project Manager; and Brian Rick, Communications Officer with FDOT. Slide 9, Regulations Governing Tonight's Public Hearing. Public hearings are a regulated forum for presenting information and obtaining public input. Tonight's public hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to express their opinions and concerns about the design of 3R and Access Management modifications on US 41, from south of Payne Street to north of Rio Villa Drive in Charlotte County, Florida. Tonight's public hearing is consistent with the federal and state requirements shown on this slide. Slide 10, Title VI. Public hearings hosted by the Florida Department of Transportation comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Public participation is solicited without regard to race, color, national origin, age, sex, religion, disability, or family status. Persons wishing to express concerns about Title VI may do so by contacting Florida Department of Transportation, District 1, Title VI Coordinator Cynthia Sykes, or State Title VI Coordinator Jacqueline Paramore at the contact information listed on the screen. This contact information is also included in the public notifications that were published for this project. Slide 11, Public Notice. Notice for this public hearing, including information on how to access the online meeting platform, was provided by mail to property owners and tenants in the project area, posted in the Charlotte Sun newspaper, in the Florida Administrative Register, on the FDOT Public Notices website, and on the FDOTswflroads.com website, as well as on FDOT social media. A media release was also issued. Slide 12, Submitting Comments During Tonight's Hearing. The Florida Department of Transportation encourages community members to participate in this US 41 design project by submitting comments to the project team. Comments may be spoken or written. This public hearing is being recorded, and all comments, whether typed or spoken, will be included in the public hearing record. In-person attendees who would like to speak during the public comment portion should turn in a speaker request card. In-person attendees who would like to offer a written comment should turn in a completed comment form. Online attendees that would like to speak during the public comment portion should type their name, mailing address, and email address into the Questions pane of the GoToWebinar Control Panel. Online attendees wishing to provide a written statement may type their contact information, followed by their comment, into the Questions pane of the GoToWebinar Control Panel. All speakers should open their comments by stating their first and last name. Please note that public hearings are intended as an opportunity for FDOT to hear the public. Public hearings do not accommodate question-and-answer exchanges. It is not the role of staff to answer questions during a public hearing. If you have questions regarding the information that is presented tonight or other questions about the project, please speak with a member of the FDOT project team after tonight's public hearing has concluded. Slide 13, Submitting Comments After Tonight's Hearing. Project materials, including a recording of tonight's presentation, will be available on the www.swflroads.com website following tonight's hearing. Questions or comments may be submitted to Project Manager Zachary Tapp via mail, email, or phone. All comments received or postmarked by May 16, 2021 will become part of the official public record. The addresses and phone number on this slide were provided in public notifications and are posted on the www.swflroads.com website. I will now be turning the microphone over to Zachary Tapp, Project Manager, for this project, to narrate the project presentation.
Thank you, Miranda. Good evening. Slide 14, Project Presentation. This slide marks the beginning of the project presentation for the US 41, State Road 45, Tamiami Trail, from Payne Street to Rio Villa Drive, Design Project in Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, FPID number 444485-1-32-01. Slide 15, Project Area. The project limits stretch for 4.1 miles on US 41 between Payne Street and Rio Villa Drive. In many locations within the limits, US 41 serves as a dividing line between the incorporated city of Punta Gorda to the west and unincorporated Charlotte County to the east. The project is bordered by the residential subdivisions of Burnt Store Meadows, Burnt Store Isles, Seminole Lakes Country Club, and South Punta Gorda Heights. Other portions of the project are bordered by industrial uses, residential estates, manufactured homes, and single-family residential. Within the project limits, US 41 is a four-lane highway. A median separates the two northbound lanes from the two southbound lanes. The posted speed limits range from 40 to 60 miles per hour. A multi-use recreational trail and lighting are installed from Taylor Road through the northern project limits. There are two signalized intersections, one at Burnt Store Road and one at Monaco Drive. Slide 16, Resurfacing, Restoration, and Rehabilitation, 3R. This project proposes 3R updates, which extend the service life of the existing facility and enhance highway safety. 3R updates include resurfacing US 41 from 1,500 feet south of Payne Street to 1,000 feet north of Rio Villa Drive, widening the road for bicycle keyholes, correcting cross slopes, upgrading ADA features, and managing access. The focus of tonight's presentation is on access management through median modifications. These changes promote safety and operational efficiency by properly spacing median openings. Slide 17, Safety and Access Management. Conflict points are areas where vehicle paths legally cross within an intersection. They are the locations where crashes primarily occur. The red dots on this slide illustrate conflict points in an open median compared to a median with a directional opening. Converting open medians to directional openings is one way to manage where and how vehicles access a roadway. Access management creates safer driving conditions by reducing the number of conflict points along a roadway. Slide 18, Restricted Crossing U-Turn, or R-Cut. Access management for this project includes closing some median openings, converting others to directional openings, and creating R-Cut openings. An R-Cut opening requires all traffic from minor roads to make a right turn and allows vehicles to make a U-turn at the designated location. The R-Cut design reduces the total number and severity of vehicle-to-vehicle conflict points. Slide 19, Safety Statistics. This table shows the reported crash totals for the years 2012 to 2019 at the intersections proposed for access management changes. Turning or through maneuvers were involved in over 40% of the crashes. The proposed median modifications would prevent those maneuvers, reducing the number of future crashes. Slide 20, Design Conditions. Mid-block, north of St. Pierre Road. The full median opening will be closed. Slide 21, Design Conditions. Payne Street. The full median opening will become a bidirectional opening. Slide 22, Design Conditions. Richmond Street. The full median opening will become a bidirectional opening. Slide 23, Design Conditions. Pine Trail Road. The full median opening will be closed. Slide 24, Design Conditions. Mid-block, north of Royal Pointiana. The full median opening approximately 800 feet north of Royal Pointiana will become a northbound U-turn directional opening. A new southbound U-turn directional opening will be installed approximately 1,500 feet north of Royal Pointiana. Slide 25, Design Conditions. Seminole Lakes Boulevard. The full median opening will become a northbound directional opening. Slide 26, Design Conditions. Mid-block, north of Ackline Road. The full median opening will be closed. Slide 27, Design Conditions. Mid-block, north of Monaco Drive. The full median opening approximately 1,200 feet north of Monaco Drive will be closed. A new southbound U-turn directional opening will be installed approximately 700 feet north of Monaco Drive. Slide 28, Design Conditions. Mandalay Road and Singapore Road. The full median openings will be closed. Slide 29, Design Conditions. Rio Villa Drive. The full median opening will become a northbound directional opening. Slide 30, Project Schedule and Cost. Design of the 3R and Access Management Changes began in fall 2020. Construction of the modifications is anticipated summer 2022 through spring 2024. The estimated construction cost is $8.5 million. This concludes the presentation for the US 41, from Payne Street to Rio Villa Drive, 3R and Access Management Design Project in Punta Gorda, Charlotte County. I'll ask Miranda to resume moderating for the public comment portion of tonight's public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Zachary. Thank you, Zachary. The project presentation has now concluded. In a few minutes, you will have the opportunity to offer spoken comments about the proposed changes to US 41. Your comments will become part of the official public hearing record. As a reminder, public hearings are intended as an opportunity for FDOT to hear the public. The public hearings do not accommodate question-and-answer exchanges. It is not the role of staff to answer questions during a public hearing. If you have questions regarding the information that has been presented tonight or other questions about the project, please speak with a member of the FDOT project team after tonight's public hearing has concluded. Contact information will be provided on the final presentation slide. Slide 32, Public Comment Protocol. We will first hear comments from online attendees. Once we have heard all comments from online attendees, we will hear from attendees at the in-person meeting location. Individuals will have up to three minutes to speak. As a reminder, all comments shared during tonight's public hearing are being recorded and will be included in the official hearing record. During the comment period, all remote attendees will remain in Listen Only mode until the moderator calls their name and unmutes them. If you have also self-muted, please be sure to turn on your microphone when the moderator announces you. Slide 33, Questions Pane for Online Attendees. Online attendees, if you have not already located the Questions pane and microphone control in your Control Panel, please do so now. If you would like to speak, type your first and last name, mailing address, and email address into the Questions pane. Monitor your Control Panel when your name is called to verify that the moderator has unmuted you. If you do not wish to speak but do want to offer a comment, type your contact information, followed by your comment, directly into the Questions pane. Slide 34, Speaker Request Card and Comment Form for In-Person Attendees. If you are attending this hearing at the in-person location and wish to offer a spoken comment, please fill out a speaker request card and provide it to our circulating team member. If you do not wish to speak but do want to offer a comment, write your comment on the comment form and provide it to our circulating team member. Members of the public are also welcome to submit comments after tonight's public hearing. Comments may be mailed, emailed, or phoned in to the project manager in the next 10 days by May 16, to be included in the public record. Slide 35, The Three-Minute Clock. We are now ready to begin taking comment from online attendees. A three-minute clock is shown on the screen. Online attendees who wish to speak should enter their name, mailing address, and email address into the Questions pane if they have not already. All speakers should open their comments by stating their first and last name. I do have a request from... Jackson Hurst. I apologize, I skipped ahead of line. My first request came in from Howard Elkin, and it looks like it is a question. So Howard, we are going to make sure to answer your question after tonight's public hearing has concluded. If you would still like to offer comments, please just type in a new request to speak so that we make sure we hear you. And then I do have a request from Jackson Hurst to speak. So Jackson, I am going to find you in my attendee panel. And Jackson, you are now unmuted, so you may begin speaking when you are ready.
Hi, my name is Jackson Hurst. And the only aspect that I really love and support about the US 41 from Payne Street to Rio Villa Drive project is the intersection of US 41 and Richmond Street. The proposed median openings will help improve access to the Circle K along with prompt towing, especially for people traveling south on US 41 and for people traveling north on US 41. The other part that I love is that the closure of the median access from SPG Auto Sales onto US 41. I understand that it's a grassy median now, but replacing it with a concrete median will prevent people from causing crashes, especially when they are turning out of SPG Auto Sales or the Circle K or prompt towing. And that could potentially lead to traffic backups, especially when people are stopping to let other people come out of the businesses.
Mr. Hurst, is that the completion of your comments?
Yes.
Very much. Okay, I am going to review my requests from online speakers. At this time, I do not have any additional requests from online attendees, so we will transition to in-person speaker requests. In-person attendees, if you have not already submitted a speaker request card, please do so now. Olivia is moving along the side of the room. She would be happy to take those speaker cards from you. And we do request the patience of all attendees as we sanitize the microphone after each speaker. As a reminder, all speakers should open their comments by stating their first and last name. And when I call you to the microphone, it is at the front of the room, and you will need to speak into the microphone in order for the recording to capture your comments. And if during comments you decide that you would like to speak, just feel free to raise your hand, and Olivia will be sure to collect any future speaker cards. Our first speaker will be Bill Courtney. Mr. Courtney, come on up to the microphone.
As you said, you can hear me?
Let's make sure.
Testing.
There we go.
Testing for volume, testing for clarity. Hi, my name is Bill Courtney, resident of Punta Gorda. Actually, I live in Burnt Store Isles. And a comment, I came to the meeting a little confused about the difference or the relationship of this effort to the US 41 Corridor Vision Plan, which we've also been a part of. So I take it these are two separate and solely distinct activities, because I think some of us here were a little confused that one might be mixed with the other, because we've had similar discussions with representatives from FDOT over the past more than a year about issues related to US 41. So I didn't see many of those reflected. Some of those were. So I'm taking that this is different from the Corridor Vision Plan. I know that's a question that you can't answer, but I'll just make it as a statement. So again, I was just a point of clarification and confusion. Because my issue, recognizing that this is a safety-focused event, is how we are or how FDOT appears to be ignoring a big safety concern about lack of northbound access from the Burnt Store Isles development to US 41. We have one, that's the traffic light at Monaco. The Madrid access is southbound only. You must U-turn to go northbound if you wish. And that forces people who go in the shopping center with Publix to use an interior street, residential street called Tripoli Boulevard, as an auxiliary 41 north. So by FDOT ignoring that problem, you're forcing the problem into our community. We've mentioned it during the Corridor Vision Plan. I've mentioned it to representatives here again tonight. And they say, gee, that's really nice. Can you give us that as a written comment? Yes, I will, again, for the third or fourth or fifth time. So I'm just very frustrated that there appears to be no lack of awareness of the issues that are being faced by the residents of Burnt Store Isles, which is a community of about 1,100-plus homes. Let's say that's 3,000 or 4,000 people. God forbid we have a hurricane or emergency and need to get out, because there's only one traffic light. There's only one way out. So I would just urge you all to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Courtney. All right, my second speaker from the facility is Linda Spazito. Come on up. And Zach, I'd like to invite you to stand on the stage if you'd like.
Nice to meet you.
You too. Thank you for your help earlier. I had to ask Ms. Spazito how to pronounce a few road names.
I'm speaking not only on behalf just of a preliminary review from a technical and safety perspective, but not on behalf of the city, but also as a resident. So you mentioned R-Cut, restricted crossing U-turn. I would have to ask you why Taylor Road is not included in your safety study? Taylor Road on the south, connecting with US 41 northbound and southbound.
As you know, I can't answer questions now, but if you contact me afterwards, I will be happy to discuss your question with you.
Okay, so that was my question number one, based on crash data. So I will follow up after that. And then the second is also the consideration of Ackline Road. I believe you mentioned that that is a full median closure. Okay. Okay, I would ask you to revisit that. There is a fire station on Ecline Road. And so it currently has access to Burnstour Road or 41. So for safety reasons, I would ask you to revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and I'd be happy to discuss with you afterwards.
Speaker number three will be Michael Rodehaver.
Thank you for providing us with a forum here to express our thoughts. I'm Mike Rodehaver from Seminole Lakes. We have approximately 720 residents in Seminole Lakes. We process about 250 visitors per day. A couple of comments. The plan has two lanes coming out of Seminole Lakes and Seminole Lakes Boulevard, turning right. The car to the left will block the view of the car to the right when those two lanes are both full. I see this as a potential dangerous situation, one you should look at. The added travel time of going a quarter of a mile south to turn and go north adds about a half a mile to the average trip if you're going to Punta Gorda or Port Charlotte. I guess today everybody thinks about global warming. That might be something to think about with the traffic that would be generated just from Seminole Lakes. The next thing I'd like to suggest is that you look at Diplomat Parkway in Fort Myers, Florida. Diplomat dead ends at 41. They have a left-turn lane that merges into 41 at that intersection. I use that occasionally, and I found it to work very well. I would like to suggest you look at that as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, sir.
All right, our next speaker is Robert Troyce.
Thank you, Robert Troyce. I just want to thank everybody from FDOT for hearing us here. I have a basically general comment. I'm a layperson. Generally, with regards to this project, I hear terminology that many of us actually don't understand. You reference things such as closing this or turning that. When I looked online and I saw the actual project, I was led to believe totally different things than what I'm seeing today. And I still don't understand the concept of many of these things. I live in Burnstour Meadows. One of the U-turns that you're referencing is a U-turn that you claim is something to be closed or the intersection to be closed off, but it's supposed to be a safety thing. I wish that you guys would be a little bit more layman in terms of your terminology so we could better understand what you're referencing. And perhaps when you do this, show us an actual picture of what it looks like so we can understand things a little bit better. I appreciate what you're doing. We like to, we like that you're hearing us out and accepting what we're saying to you. But just please lay it out a little bit easier for us to understand. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
The next speaker will be Dave DeGeron.
Thank you for taking time and speak to all of us and inform us what's taking place. I'd just like to reiterate what Bill indicated here a little bit earlier. I'm from Burnstour Isles, moved here about two years ago. And we talk about safety and about road access and volume of traffic, what's happening in the community with a legion growing. We hear that the facility that they're building, the resort facility starting again, we see the lane traffic increasing, the size of the traffic going to the airport onto 41. So we know growth's going to take place here. The particular issue that I have is for the people in Burnstour Isle and the talks of same that Bill was mentioning too. What I see, and this is day-to-day, presently the residents living on Tripoli Boulevard, it's very residential, two-lane. What's happening, it's a quiet street, but oftentimes people are now coming from the plaza where Publix is, where Home Depot is, and then other retailers, using that as an access in order to go northbound on 41. So there's many a time where people are on the tail, your tail end, if you're trying to pass you. I know we've had police there try to slow down the speed and all. But can't something be done on 41 itself in order to allow those people from the plaza to not have to use our residential area there, but to be able to access 41 northbound? And you know, I know the question comes up. Is there a situation because of the stoplights being too close to each other? I can provide you with situations I've seen in other states where that does work. And I'd be more than happy to do that too, where they are at close proximity, but it still allows, there's a light at a commercial intersection to be able to allow left-hand turns and right-hand turns. And it's not really a question there of the how access, how close the access are to those two lights. So I just want to raise that possibility. In Madrid, you can have a left-hand turn, a right-hand turn, put a light in there, and it'd be closer to the intersection light that's now to Burnstour Road. So thank you again, and I'd just like a few, and it's, I see this every day when I'm driving back and forth on that road. And I'd say maybe every other day I have someone on my tail of my car. And there, and sometimes you have an aggressive drivers, and there's a lot of traffic these poor people on that road have to deal with. And with the, like I said, too, with the increase in volume of activity in the community, we'd like not to have that as an access or annex road to 41. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. If you'd wish to discuss, just meet me after the presentation. Thank you.
I have a speaker request from Renee Bothwell.
Renee Bothwell, I live in Burnstour Isles. And I, after listening to everything going on and speaking with some people from FDOT, I think this project needs to be tabled until FDOT does further studies on the issues the residents really have. The FDOT members need to stay in the area and really get to know our problems. Just being in the area a few times doesn't give you any real knowledge of what's happening here. And I agree with the gentleman who just spoke. I have, I have a lot more I could say, but this is, I just think it needs to be tabled until further studies, and FDOT really gets to know, go to the areas that we're having problems with on a daily basis, and study it really hard to see what we're going through. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bothwell. Do we have any more in-person speaker requests? All in-person speaker requests have now been accommodated, and I will ask again for any speaker requests from our online attendees. I do see a comment that has come in through from Mitchell Austin. Mr. Austin, just making sure that you are not requesting to speak. I believe that is simply a written comment for us to put into the records. However, if you were wanting to speak also, please do indicate that. Thank you, sir. It's just a comment. Seeing no additional requests from online attendees, I will ask again for any speaker requests from our in-person attendees. Sir, if you could simply provide my associate with a speaker card after you'd completed speaking.
You're welcome. Frank Petracino, of Burnstour Isles. At our last meeting here at the convention center, the topic I'd come up of running, I don't know the exact terminology for it, but it would be coming down Madrid Boulevard. You would create an access road behind Ecline Road and run parallel with 41 and would then turn right by the Bank of the Ozarks, where a traffic light could be installed, we understood at that time, because it's equidistant from Monaco and from Madrid. But I didn't see that on your plan. And speaking with Ryan, he mentions that that would be on private property, and that would fall under the domain of the city. So I put that out as a comment, if that could be included for city involvement in the future plans.
Thank you. And again, if we could just get that speaker card, we'll make sure that we have your name entered correctly into the record. And I did receive a speaker request from James Brickell.
Thank you. Good evening. I noticed on the drawings that are back there versus the drawing that we got a year ago, year and a half ago, that any modifications to where Taylor Road hits US-41 has been eliminated. That is a terrible intersection, and nobody said anything about that except for me. So I would like to talk to you about that later, or you can come up and explain why you left it out and whatever. But it's a hazard that intersection. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I do have a request from CJ Metcalf.
Hi, I'm CJ Metcalf, a resident of Burnstour Isles. And I want to say, you know, I, I know FDOT has their job to do and their criteria they have to follow. But myself and a group of residents and representatives from Burnstour Isles have attended your workshops. We have submitted suggestions. We have done everything that we know to do to address a growing problem. As our community there in Burnstour Isles grows, so does the problem. And it is this, the two intersections of Madrid and Monaco. We don't know what else to do. We have written letters, and it seems that our efforts have fallen upon deaf ears. This is a time when FDOT is addressing changes in US-41, and it's like they flew over Burnstour Isles and didn't even address the problems that we're having. And I just ask each one of you to go and sit at the stoplights, drive that, drive the streets there in the subdivision, and see what we're running into as to residents. And when our area is built out, I don't know what's going to happen. It's just going to be a mess. What? And then address it and spend more money redoing what you've undone with just taking out that turn lane? I would think that the interest would be to do it now while you're focusing in that area. As Mr. Courtney said earlier, we've got about 1,200 homes in there, and that's 3,000 to 4,000 people. And it, the smaller areas, it seems, are getting addressed and not this area that is, it's just going to multiply in the problems. The safety concerns, I was on the board and in charge of kind of safety issues, and I was scared to death about things going on there. It was I who got the speed limit lowered there on Tripoli, trying to avert further problems with people walking in that residential area and that shopping center traffic cutting through there, the delivery trucks, the UPS, FedEx. I mean, it's a racetrack forum. And I'm sorry, it's just that I, I feel that our tax dollars appear to have no voice. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, and I'd be happy to discuss that with you further after the presentation.
Do I have any additional requests from in the room? I would like to acknowledge that I did receive an additional comment from Howard Elkin. If there was an intention to speak, just let me know. But it looks like that is just a comment. And not seeing any outstanding online or in-person speaker requests, if there are no more requests, we will close the microphones. Slide 36, Public Hearing Conclusion. As a reminder, comments may be submitted to project manager Zachary Tap after tonight's public hearing by mail, email, or phone. All comments received or postmarked by May 16, 2021 will become part of the official public record. The phone number and addresses on this slide were provided in public notifications and are posted on the www.swflroads.com website. On behalf of the Florida Department of Transportation, I'd like to thank you for attending this public hearing and for providing your input on this project. It is now 6:50. I hereby officially close the public hearing for the resurfacing restoration and rehabilitation design project and access management on US-41 from south of Payne Street to north of Rio Villa Drive in Punta Gorda, Charlotte County, financial project identification number 444485-1-32-01. Thank you very much for your time, and have a good evening.